I'm ready.
Sherry, you ready?
I just need one minute, just so I can get to do meeting up.
Welcome, everyone, to the June 3, 2025 City Commission Meeting, and we will start by having Sherry read the rules of the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. If you would please silence your cellphones to minimize distractions during the meeting. The primary format for accessing or participating in this meeting is in person at City Hall. Virtual access to view or participate in the meeting cannot be guaranteed. The chat function will not be monitored. If you have any trouble, the meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. When the mayor calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Virtual participants should use the raise hand function. When prompted, select "Join as panelist." There will be a brief delay as your role changes. Once your name is called, please unmute and turn on your camera to provide your comments. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Please state your name and zip code before speaking. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute participants. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. So, motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Littlejohn, second by Commissioner Lawson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He said it.
Did he say aye?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Devo is online. Okay, we have four proclamations tonight and recognitions, and the first one is the recognition of the 100th anniversary of the Psi Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Society, and I think Maya Cross is here? Maybe?
Let me look and see if she's online. I don't think she was attending virtually, but I want to check.
Well?
I don't see it. Maya is on, so let me move her.
She is online?
Yep, she is.
Okay, excellent.
Promoted panelist.
Maya, if you're available, to say a few words?
Michaela Holmes is speaking on my behalf. She should be in person.
Who was the name again?
Michaela Holmes.
Okay. Is there a Michaela Holmes in the room? Well, she's not here at the moment. Well, we will move that proclamation to the end. We have three others. We'll do that. We'll come back to you, Maya, and then Michaela, you said? Okay. We'll check on that. We'll come back to that. So, the second proclamation, then, is to proclaim June 4, 2025, as the United Way of Car Valley Day of Giving. And Kathy Smith and Julie Riling, here. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, and thank you. I'm Kathy Smith. The zip code is 66049, and my colleague, Judy Riling.
Judy Riling, and I have the same zip code.
Just want to show our appreciation for recognizing the work that United Way does all year long, and with our Day of Giving tomorrow, where we will be highlighting many of our community partners and the good work that they do in Douglas County. Thank you.
Great. Well, it's always a big day, and I'm glad it wasn't today, because the rain would have slowed you down, but tomorrow will be much better. But, big day for United Way of Car Valley. So, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the United Way of Car Valley creates and cultivates an unbreakable network of support for healthy and resilient communities, and whereas United Way is committed to the success of the whole family in all its forms, recognizing that success of one individual in the family is inextricably linked to the success of everyone, and whereas United Way invests and manages millions of dollars to help ensure that regardless of the zip code, every family and individual has access to the resources to live, learn, and thrive, and whereas United Way thinks and acts strategically about volunteering to increase the capacity of the local nonprofit community to serve our neighbors in need, and whereas United Way convenes conversations among donors, partners, and stakeholders to create a common understanding of our greatest challenges and to generate better, more inclusive, and achievable solutions, and whereas this work is not possible without donor support and individuals across Lawrence that have the ability to invest in this work on United Way of Car Valley's 2025 Day of Giving. Now, therefore, I, Brad Finkel, I, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, to hereby proclaim June 4, 2025, as the United Way of Car Valley Day of Giving. And good luck tomorrow. Hope you raise a lot of money.
Thank you.
That'll be great. Okay. Our next proclamation is to proclaim June 6, 2025, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and let's see. Ms. Brook from the Douglas County Moms Demand Action.
Lena Carter-Brook, 66049. Good evening. My name is Lena Carter-Brook, and I'm a volunteer with the Kansas Chapter of Moms Demand to Action for Gun Sense in America, a grassroots, volunteer-led organization that seeks to reduce gun violence in the United States through a combination of advocacy, education, and community engagement. I'm here alongside other volunteers, actually only one today, but from Lawrence and Douglas County to express solidarity with victims and survivors of gun suicides, homicides, and unintentional shootings. Every day in the United States, more than 120 people are killed by a gun. Well over half of those are suicides, and in Kansas, the figure is almost 70%. According to the Annals of Internal Medicine, the presence of a gun in the home triples the risk of death by suicide. Most people who attempt suicide without a gun survive, and most who survive once do not die by suicide later. Meanwhile, homicides cause more than 40% of gun deaths in America and almost 30% in Kansas. Unarmed people often get caught in the crossfire, like Hadiya Pendleton, the 15-year-old whose 2013 death in Chicago inspired the Wear Orange Movement. We have all seen that even here in Lawrence, altercations have escalated to homicide because of the presence of a gun. Domestic violence is also a driving force in gun homicide. According to the American Journal of Public Health, a gun in the home increases the risk of murder by an intimate partner by 500%. In Kansas, as in the rest of the United States, guns are now the leading cause of death for children and teens. Each year, more than 2,600 American kids are killed by someone else with a gun. For children under 13, these deaths are usually connected to domestic violence or the unsafe storage of firearms by adults in the home. Of course, gun violence can alter the course of a person's life without ending it. Every day in the U.S., some 200 people suffer debilitating or even irreparable injuries at a cost not just of medical treatment, but of earning potential that can't be recovered. Also affected are the families, friends, and loved ones of those killed and injured, who themselves become mourners and sometimes caregivers, and witnesses to shootings, who might relive their trauma for years. We aim to make our communities safer by supporting policies like background checks on all gun sales and red flag laws to keep guns away from people who are a threat to themselves and others. We also support programs like Be Smart, which educates gun-owning adults to keep their weapons unloaded and locked up with ammunition stored separately. But our work begins by supporting victims and survivors. In observing National Gun Violence Awareness Day by wearing orange on Friday, June 6, we honor them, and we dedicate our efforts to them.
Thank you for those words. I'll read the proclamation. Every day, 120 Americans are killed by gun violence. More than 200 Americans are shot and wounded. There's an average of nearly 18,000 gun homicides every year, and Americans are 26 times more likely to die of gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Kansas has the 22nd highest rate of gun deaths in the United States, with 473 gun deaths every year, a rate of 16.2 deaths per 100,000 people, and costs the state $5.7 billion each year, of which 95.1 million is paid by the taxpayers. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we witness an increase in firearm suicides, homicides, and non-fatal shootings across the country and in our community. And whereas, in January 2013, 15-year-old Haida Pendleton was tragically shot and killed, and her classmates chose the color orange to honor her and raise awareness of gun violence across the United States. And whereas, we will wear orange on June 6, 2025, to raise awareness of gun violence and pay tribute to Haida Pendleton and other victims and survivors of gun violence, as well as the loved ones of those affected. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our families and communities safe. Now, therefore, I, Brad Finkel, I, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, to hereby proclaim Friday, June 6, 2025, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourage all citizens to support their local community efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human life. Thank you. Okay. Looks like a group's coming in, and our next proclamation is to proclaim the month of June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and looks like we have a whole group. Shanaya Fowler. I don't know who's speaking first.
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
My name is Shanaya Lopez Cabrera, the Director of Lawrence Pride, and I have our board and the community behind me. I would like to thank you all for once again declaring June as Pride Month in Lawrence. Truly, this year has been difficult for our community. Our trans members especially have been subjected to hateful rhetoric, physical violence, and an onslaught of legislative attacks from our state and federal government. Even at the local level, many in our community are worried that the rights that they have fought for will be stripped away. Throughout the month, LGBTQIA+ people and allies will celebrate the diversity of our community. Fabulously, of course, I mean, look at the people behind me, and most importantly, visibly, because pride is a protest against the voices and systems that wish to drive us back into hiding and even to destroy us. As young queer Kansans, I hope to one day move to Lawrence, because I had heard that it was a place where I could be myself. I know I'm not alone in this experience, and I just ask that you let yourself continue to be guided by our city's values, especially that of courage, as you navigate what's ahead for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Maybe remind everyone when the parade is. It's coming up.
Yes, June 7, 11:00 a.m. in downtown Lawrence, and a huge party in the park from 12:00 to 8:00 afterward.
Okay.
After-party at the Granada 8.
Okay. Full day, full day. Okay, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the month of June holds historical significance rooted in the Stonerall Inn riot of 1969, often recognized as the catalyst for the modern American LGBTQIA+ liberation movement, and whereas individually and collectively, members of Lawrence and Douglas County's LGBTQIA+ community contribute greatly to neighborhood revitalization, economic vitality, arts and culture, and the social fabric of our city, county, state, and country, and whereas LGBTQIA+ pride is defined as the positive stance against discrimination and violence towards lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and/or LGBTQIA+ individuals, and promote their self-determination, personal identity, and equal rights, as well as increase the visibility as a community and celebrate sexual diversity and gender variance. And whereas, Lawrence and Douglas County prides itself on inclusiveness as one of the first counties in the region to have a domestic partnership registry, and protects its residents from discrimination and harassment based on actual or perceived race, color, sex, religion, disability, age, marital status, place of birth, families with children, sexual orientation, or national origin, and we are committed to continued social progress and the cause of human rights, celebrating the great diversity of our community. And whereas, the City of Lawrence remains committed to protecting the civil rights of all members of the LGBTQIA+ community. Now, therefore, I, Brad Finkel, I, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, to hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Lawrence, and encourage all residents to join in ending prejudice everywhere it may exist, respecting the rights of all people, and to celebrate the diversity and richness of our city and country. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we had one other recognition. Did Michaela?
Right.
So, Michaela's here. Okay, there you are. Okay, the 100th anniversary of Delta Sigma Theta Society, Inc., the Psi Chapter.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello. First, I just want to thank the City of Lawrence for recognizing our centennial celebration. I am accepting this recognition on behalf of Maya Cross, our president. The Psi Chapter, just a little bit of history.
Yeah.
The Psi Chapter was chartered at the University of Kansas on June 5, 1925, and has the distinction of being the oldest chapter of Delta Sigma Theta in Kansas. The charter members are Maud Young Armon, Flora Bell Barber, Lucille Rogers, Anyard, Gagnell Mace, and Miles Green, Ruth Gregg, Mildred Ingram, Mary Bennett Jackson, Marie Jackson Johnson, Ruth Johnson, Edworth Southward Peterson, and Anna Rogers. We are a 2025 reactivation line. It was reactivated by 10 members, starting with Anaya Dewey, Michaela Holmes, Precious Muongi, Dakota Harris, Naomi Richardson, sorry, Leslie, Kofi, Charlie, and, sorry, Kerrigan, Foster.
That's good work.
Maya Cross, and Mia Collins. Sorry, it takes me a while to get all of it. So, yes, that is all I have for you, and we just want to thank you again.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that, and good memory there, by the way. Excellent. And, yeah, 100 years is a big deal, so congratulations on that. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the Psi Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., was chartered on the campus of the University of Kansas on June 5, 1925, in Lawrence, Kansas, making it the first chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority in the state of Kansas. And whereas, 12 phenomenal charter members committed to sisterhood, scholarship, service, promoting academic excellence, providing assistance to those in need, and addressing the social issues of the time, and whereas their vision and dedication birthed a chapter that would reflect the major programs of the sorority that are based upon the five-point programmatic thrust: economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. And whereas, the City of Lawrence is honored to recognize and celebrate the contributions of the Psi Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., as past and current members reunite to the chapter's anniversary celebrating 100 years at the University of Kansas. Now, therefore, I, Brad Finkel, I, Vice Mayor of the City of Lawrence, along with my fellow Commissioners, to hereby recognize the 100th anniversary of the Psi Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., and urge all citizens and members, alumni, and supporters to commemorate this historic milestone with pride, reflection, and renewed commitment to the values upon which this chapter was founded. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you, everyone, there for the proclamations, and we can let folks go out if you don't want to stay for the next part. The next part is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and approved by one motion. Members of the governing body may remove items for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public may remove items identified as quasi-judicial for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comment, and I think Commissioner Lawson, among others, we're going to pull Resolution 6A, C6A, C6B, and C7E.
Correct.
Is that correct? And that would be the Vision Zero Transportation Plan, the Resolution 7600 related to the amendments related to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, and then C7E is related to the Balker Street Block Party. Any other items to be pulled? Seeing none from Mayor Devo either. We will look for a motion on the, oh, I don't think there's any quasi-judicial. Confirm that.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, look for a motion on the rest of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of C6A, C6B, and C7E.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Lawson, and a second by Commissioner Littlejohn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Passes four to zero, and we'll take those in order. C6A is the Vision Zero Transportation Safety Action Plan, and Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, that was, you can go ahead. That was brought up by one of our community members, so go ahead. Thank you.
Oh, I'm just here.
Oh.
To answer questions.
Staff, if you have questions.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, I was surprised you were up there. Hi, David.
Hello, David Bastin. Commissioners, as you consider the Vision Zero Transportation Safety Action Plan and adopt Resolution 7598, I urge you to recognize this critical safety initiative intersects with three pressing challenges Lawrence has faced. I did notice that, and this is related to funding, I did notice that the Department of Homeland Security had Lawrence and Douglas County listed as a sanctuary jurisdiction designation, and then we have some potential conflicts between our DEI policies and federal law, and I've mentioned before, the Ordinance 10121, which basically, from the way I see it, discriminates against students and housing, and I would just, I did send a letter in that's at the end of this packet, so if anybody at the public wants to read that, or you guys want to read that in distant detail, I'd urge you to do that, and my concern is just not only this crucial program that we have here could lose federal funding, but we have a lot of other programs that are in jeopardy of losing that funding too, and if something's not done, are you guys willing to tell the community that they're basically going to have to come up with these extra money in taxes? I mean, it's got to get paid for somewhere or drop the programs, so just a heads up on that too, so we don't lose this funding and other funding to look at those. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay. Bring back the Commissioners. Have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Since it's been polled, would anyone else like to make a public comment on the Vision Zero Transportation Plan?
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I did not prepare for this, but I saw zero, if this is about reaching zero fatalities from car crashes like they do in Europe, I think it should be up to the public, because to reach zero car crashes, we'd have to speed, like lower speed limits, but we've also had the, it comes out every four years, I think, where we list our priorities, and then like, one that's always at the top is, gosh, I forget the word now, but getting through, getting traffic through as, not as fast as possible, but in a timely manner. So, those two things kind of, I think they conflict with each other. So, I think I would like to see the city, I don't know, engage more with the public and everyone, not just certain groups, but like everyone, and find out how many car crashes are we willing to have to get where we want to go on time? Because I'm not willing to go zero car crashes if it means we have to go 20 miles all the time. I'm willing to risk my life for happiness, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Seeing no other public comment in the room. Any public comment online?
No.
No.
Okay. Bring that back to us and, comments?
No. Want to make a motion?
I would just say, Chris, you should read the plan. It talks about a lot of those things, and trying to find that right balance. So appreciate the work the committee did on that and the public participation they did put into it. It's an ambitious plan, and of course, it goes through now to 2050, so we have a long way to go. So, but yes, open for motion.
I am moved to approve the Vision Zero Transportation Safety Action Plan and adopt Resolution Number 7598.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lawson, second by Commissioner Littlejohn. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passes four to zero. Now we'll move to C6B, which is the resolution about the meeting order. And Commissioner Lawson, you pulled that item, but.
It was, again, David had asked that I pull that.
Hello, David Bastin again. Yeah, I just wanted to express my concern regarding this decision as outlined in Resolution 7600, to discontinue streaming the city commission meetings on the city's YouTube channel and instead solely rely on Zoom webinars for real-time public access. Rather than complying with this requirement by including general public comment in the YouTube live streaming, and I think it's on the city, the channel 25 also, the city has chosen to eliminate the live stream on this accessible platform. The decision raises serious questions about the, about cities' commitment to ensuring residents can stay informed about the decisions that are discussed during the meetings and periodic concerns voiced by other citizens. I know this was moved to the end, the public comment, general public comments were moved to the end over a year ago, and then not livestreamed. And I think this is all, um, sorry. Let's see. I just request some quick clarification on the following points. Again, I sent a letter to you guys at the end of this packet. If you guys want to read it in full, and also if any of the public wants to read it, you can scroll down to the end of the packet. Given that the Zoom webinar allows real-time viewing of the entire meeting, including general public comment, is, will the city ensure that the full meeting, including this segment, is included in the recordings posted on YouTube the following day, or whenever it becomes available? Excluding general public comment from recordings would further limit the public's ability to stay informed about the communities concerned raised during these meetings, contrary to the intent of KOMA. Yeah, and this was all basically because of Senate Bill 70, which I advocated for. Just consider those things, please. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We did get your letter there. Any questions before we open into public comment? Just go ahead and, public comment, we'll go ahead and let people do that.
So David's last concern is my chief concern. The only reason to do this is so that you can curate the record. And the three of you probably didn't dream this up. It was one of these idiots over here, and it's a sad thing that Craig can't be here to take responsibility for his behavior and for the actions that he's doing against public comment. But let's go over the death throes that you guys have gone through to try to limit the speech of the public. Ms. Larson, you've ridiculed the public by claiming that they were wrong when the chief just lied to you. Then you and city commission candidate Shipley back here made up some lies about how you felt threatened by me walking out with you, asking questions. I noticed that I'm still here tonight after two weeks ago, sitting down there asking you questions as you actually left the building. Maybe Mr. Finkeldai could give the school district a little advice about their trespassing policies, because it's obvious the city doesn't want to go there. But you first cut down consent, if we all remember way back. And let's talk about why citizens can't pull consent items. And I believe that was when commission candidate Shipley was the mayor. They had to limit the citizens' ability to pull consent items, because I stood at this podium and said, "Well, why don't I just pull all the consent items and talk the whole night?" Just the insinuation that I might do that, and boom, we have rule changes. You guys are nuts. Then you had to move public comment to the end, like that was going to stop anything. Now you just forced us to be here for the whole meeting so that we can talk about other things. That was just dumb. You guys have gone through all these motions to limit, to shut people down. Even Amber and her little stage show, running off the dais and trying to get sympathy from the newspapers over here that carry water for you guys and carry your lies, which is why we have to bring our own cameras so that we can prove your lies in the end. And that's happened repeatedly. It's pathetic. Then, in some idea that you had, that everything up here was performative. Everything, and I've heard this from you guys, that it's all performative, especially from these knuckleheads, that it's just performative, that I'm just up here for a paycheck, that I'm just doing this for money. God, you guys. And if you're going to blame YouTube's policies about why you have to do this, because you're afraid of what might be seen, let me refresh you in case city staff has misled you about YouTube's policies. The only reason you would need to censor content is if your whole goal is to make money. Because if you notice, I upload picture or videos every day with the word bitch, shit, fuck, fuck you, motherfucker, and all those words, and I'm still there.
Time.
Good evening, all. John Martin, 66046. I came tonight not really prepared, and I'm on painkillers, so this may not be as clear as I like. So I rise in opposition to the city removing the live broadcast from the YouTube channel. And let me remind you of, or kind of inform you of why. The city's professed vision is the city of Lawrence, supporting an unmistakingly vibrant community with an innovative, equitable, transparent, and responsible local government. Broadcasting live city meetings, including public comment, is a transparent process. And any step away from that removes trust in your local government. The values that the city of Lawrence professes: you're committed to character, competence, courage, collaboration, and commitment. Character always matters in elected leaders, and when you remove trust from that equation, character becomes in question, and that removes your ability to govern effectively. Competence, again, trust. You have to trust in your elected officials if you want the trust of the community. Courage, it takes courage to sit in that chair. I've been in that chair. I know it's not easy. I know that it's never easy facing an angry public. But I think it's something you need to do, to deal with, three minutes at a time. Collaboration, again, collaboration takes trust. And when you remove transparency from the equation, trust goes out the window. And with everything we have going on in Lawrence, especially with the budget and the tax rates and stuff, we've got to be able to trust our local government. Otherwise, things are going to get worse. So commitment, I would ask you guys to recommit to being transparent in your local government, in the job you're doing. Again, I respect the job you're doing. I respect the chair, but I think we can do better. And I would ask that you would not remove public comments from the live broadcasts, and you would continue to do live broadcasts on YouTube. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Eddie, I came from Texas to come visit with you guys and gals. I'm a vet, a veteran, and what made me come up here? I was in Wichita training with Eddie Gallagher on a kill house. Long time, you know, a long time ago, I was a cop with the military, did my stuff. But one thing, as a veteran, that I know, I've served two tours. I'm a Jewish veteran, and I bring that up for a reason. This town should have that American flag loud and proud, y'all. You should honor people's, their words, whatever they're saying, and just acknowledge it. One thing that bothers me, and I've seen y'all do it, I pulled your oath of office, every one of you, and y'all signed it. Littlejohn did something, I guess that's you, right, Bart? Littlejohn, is that you? We pulled up your oath of office, and on there it says something about perjury. You're supposed to do something with the Constitution, supposed to honor the Constitution, the Kansas Constitution. You guys and gals have not, absolutely have not. You have abused people's rights here. You have absolutely arrested them, trespassed them, because your feelings. I was in Thailand, and it was a kingdom. Let me tell you about Thailand. You drop a bill with the king's picture on it and you step on it, you go to jail. They jailed journalists for thinking and possibly intimating something's going down on somebody in terms of their words, their thoughts. They were thinking in advance, this is what they said negatively. You guys, this isn't America. This is a red communist state. And I, this just pisses me off. I came up here 500 miles to say, "You guys got to clean your act up." I watch you guys. You've aggrieved this man right here, Justin Spease, because of what? Their words? Because their viewpoints differed from yours? There's case law, there's substantias, everything. I know there's a lawsuit coming, and that's ridiculous. You know, you guys have perjured yourselves, 100%. Every one of you, you're using the Ten Badges back here to enforce your will. "Oh, it's our building, it's our words." No, it's the people of this city that own this place. You're there because of them, and you forgot about it. And I think you have. But one of the things that just really just pisses me off, I interviewed a bunch of the ladies and gals with the numbers on their arms, Jewish people from the camps. And what you are doing, and what you have done, is reminiscent of the brown shirts of 1930s. They stripped the Jews' rights exactly like you're doing to the citizens of this town. You're limiting their speech, you're doing everything to stop hurting your feelings. Grow a pair, y'all. Get real. Get a little bit of moxie behind you, be proud that you got elected under a flag. Not, you guys and gals got up there because of what? You're, you want to be good for the community and agenda and what have you? I just came up here wanting to say, "Hey."
Time.
Thank you. I'm here because these guys have been abridged and have been hurt.
Thank you.
John Ems, 66049. I can't begin to do honor to the prior speakers on this issue, but I'm a taxpayer citizen here, and from my perspective, you have consistently made it more difficult for citizens to speak their words. You've maneuvered things to be late in the evening. The county puts this up almost the second thing on the agenda. You've made it more difficult to watch in terms of real time. So I'm not proud of the changes you have made, and I certainly agree with the prior speakers. I think you should change the rules that you've instituted on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina McKenna, 66046. First, I'm here to say thank you. Reading the official Pride proclamation is a big deal. Celebrating voices is a big deal. A few of the other proclamations, they ask you for courage. This, though, 7600, that's cowardice. We must celebrate our wins as we struggle through the mounting pile of crap that's being loaded on us every single day. However, I'm here right now to hold your feet to the fire like we're supposed to do with our leadership. You're supposed to represent the people of this city, the people who choose to call Lawrence their home, yet you're trying to create silence. Again, I've been here before, talking to a different set of faces. Some of them are the same. Back when we had to remind you that bathroom usage isn't supposed to matter, and then we have a unisex one at home, you created a safe haven. That was important, too. Back when public comment was actually part of the meeting. So you put us to the very end to try to not inconvenience yourselves. You had to listen to a lot of us for hours, stating what we want from our democratically chosen leadership. And sadly, you've been listening less and less to our voices. You talk about throwing money at programs. You know what? Just get out there and talk to us. We can tell you exactly what we're looking for in our leadership. We only get three minutes, three lousy minutes, for each of us to come up here and tell you our hearts. That is not enough. So you push us to make it easier on you. Well, you won the round of moving it to the end. Then you decided not to broadcast the public comment to silence us more, and now you're trying to stop live streaming. Not only is this a blow to the shred of transparency that we get from you, but you're also going to be silencing the accessibility, the people who are differently able than us, the accessibility voices in our community. That is discrimination. Call it what you want to, give us reasons that you want to, and flavor it however you want to. It's discrimination, and shame on you for bringing that back into the leadership positions in another way. I thought you'd learned before that we in Lawrence really don't like that. So for Lawrence, where I am proud and honored to be part of you, apparently, we're going to have to attend every single meeting to keep our leadership accountable. We will push the transparency back into uncomfortable levels like we've done before. We know exactly what is being attempted, and we are not here for that. We're here to hold you accountable and to tell you what we need from you. We, the people, put you in your seats. So a quick question, how much of our money does it save to end the transparency of live streaming compared to other options we actually support?
Thank you.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Yeah? Y'all just sit there mute? I said, "How you guys doing?"
I said, "Good."
Oh, okay. I didn't hear you. You're going to have to speak up. I got, you know, hearing problems, veteran shit, you know, something that I don't think you guys really seem to care about. Seems like you got a transparency problem around here. Is that true? How many times you got to hear the people speak before you do something? Are you just going to sit on your asses and just laugh, smirk, pretend like you're paying attention? I'm a visitor here, and it only took me 10 minutes of driving around this town to realize that there's something seriously wrong with this city. Just about every single government building out there renovated, new this, new that. You're putting an extension on the sheriff's department. You got the police department going to a new building, and this and that. And you got these restaurants that have great food that are struggling to pay their damn taxes. Where's all this money going? Spoke to a tyrant, right here, spoke to this tyrant right here, for three minutes, and already, and within three minutes, found an unconstitutional order that your city has against soliciting. Do you guys know anything about free speech, accountability, transparency? What kind of fucking circus y'all running up here? No, you know, like, I'm sitting here trying to be compassionate with you, let you know what's going on, and y'all just sitting there with blank fucking stares on your face. Do you know that there's a row of houses behind the sheriff's department? Nice little cute houses, all manicured, good. The owners love them. You know what they don't fucking love? The fact that they can't park in front of their fucking houses because these cops and your sheriffs are taking up all the goddamn parking spaces there with their private cars. Do you know anything about that? No, you don't, because you don't fucking care about the people in your city. It's that fucking simple. Adios.
Thank you. Any other public, oh, looks like someone's coming in.
Hello. Well, hearing everybody's public comments was very, very aggressive. Um, well, hearing everybody's public comments was very, very aggressive. Everybody needs to work on everything. And, um, actually, I came up here asking, um, for some type of understanding on the no camping ban that's being enforced August 15th.
We're talking about the, the public.
Yes.
This one ordinance first. We'll talk, have open public comment later, but if it's related to the.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that right there, the, the whole public comment, you know, if you take this, what am I trying to say? Transparency, like, like, like they said, you know?
Yes.
It's really important to us, to the, to the whole community, I mean, to everybody. I mean, there's a lot of misunderstandings. There are a lot of, I feel very, I don't know, confused about everybody's aggression towards the city and the city aggression towards you guys. I, I'm, well. We all have to be on the same page. There's, there's no other way that, that any of this can work. Like, we all have to be together. I don't know how that's gonna work or how that's gonna happen, but I hope we can figure it out. Because after hearing everybody's comments, I'm kinda, you know, what happened to Lawrence. I'm just saying, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
David Collins, 66049. I just wanted to come up and say that I support what was said by the gentleman with his arm in the sling. I don't know his name. But I think that transparency is an important thing. The one aspect of this particular resolution that I'm concerned about is whether, I just don't know the answer because I haven't been able to find it in news reports, is whether stopping the live streaming of the meeting will make it difficult for people to know what's happening in the meeting in order to make a relevant public comment at the end of the meeting, or whenever you have it. I don't, does that prevent people from being able to witness what's happening, you know, when it's happening? That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Howard Callahan. I've worked in homeless social work for a long, long time. That's relevant in this context, because if anybody that knows anything about the history of disability rights or liberation movements knows that the space for advocacy is not guaranteed. Anybody that's dealt with a repressive regime or organization knows that they will try to isolate and silence you. And I realize that there are times that, you know, folks could make an argument that this platform might be being used inappropriately. But when it comes to the ability for people to self-advocate in a manner that their voices are heard by both their electeds and the community that has a stake in the kinds of decisions that are made, once that's gone, we won't hear it. We won't know. We'll lose the ability to actually, you know, notice that the canary in the coal mine stopped singing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Merrill Sake, 66049. I'd like to ask to oppose Resolution 7600 and maintain the live stream and also maintain and bring back the live stream of the public comments. I feel like it's important for people to participate in their government and the rules that are being made. And I think not live streaming the city commission meetings and also what's currently happening now, not, not showing the public comments is taking away the people's capacity to participate in their government and be represented by their government and the rules that are being made. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I'd just like to start off saying, why have we not had public input about how our meetings are run? We've been talking about this for, what, three years at least? Like, why have you not done, like, how important is public comment? Or, like, what order should the meeting be ran in? You've never done public input to get the public's actual feelings about this subject. Also, you, you all claim you're doing it to stop the few bad apples. But I'm gonna say right now, all your changes have not stopped Dr. Spees or Lawrence's accountability from showing up, or myself. I don't know if I'm one of them. But look at tonight. There's more. Look, there's, there's more people with cameras recording. If you go through with this, you're not stopping them, you're increasing them. You're stopping the people you claim to be your, that you, you claim you're doing it for the, for the rest of the people, but that, that's who you're stopping. And I don't, and I, if I'm being honest, I think that's how it's intended. You, you act like you don't like the, the, the wild cards, but it's the normal people. You don't like it when a bunch of them come and talk for an hour. That's what you're trying to stop. And you're using the wild ones as your cover. That's what I think. And also, future predictions about what's gonna happen, I think someone will start streaming it themselves. And I, you might think it's gonna be maybe Lawrence's accountability, maybe someone else. Maybe it's one of the social media people we already have. And I've heard some of them on Facebook, they can be pretty quick to ban people. So just think about that. If one of them starts streaming, and then they, on our, on the YouTube now, comments are turned off. They might turn comments on. So you wanna talk about toxic, that's gonna be much more toxic than what you have now. Also, if you do go through this, are you gonna put public comment back at the beginning since you moved it to the end? Because, well, we can't stream it unless we move it to the end or whatever. So I just wanna point that out. Oh, performative. Yeah, all politics is performative. You all are as performative as we are when you are running for office. Oh, yeah, and minimum wage, rent control, sanctuary city, all this stuff. We can't find loopholes around that. But my God, transparency in government, that's what we're gonna fight and find the loophole for. I say, get rid of our city manager. Seriously.
Amen.
Yes, thank you.
Patrick Ross, 66049. I'd echo a lot of the comments said earlier. I would also question when public comment would be held if that change was made. I question why the change is being made. So I'd like the city to explicitly state why they're doing it. And if there's an issue with YouTube, let's see what happens first, would be my suggestion. If there is a problem, then we'll change it. If not, then let's just kinda keep it the way it is, because it seems to work well. Although I would say the, some of the changes we made in the last year, I disagree with. I also just flat out believe that if we don't live broadcast the meetings, less people will engage. Because even I, knowing how to navigate the portal website, it's still kind of confusing and finicky. And so it's just, if the whole goal is to have politics that represent the, the people, citizens of Lawrence, like, I flat out disagree with this decision helping with that. I would also question the reasons behind it and would echo some of the sentiments issued earlier. If the issue is mostly because of public comment, I would say, between the options presented to us, I would say that the best course of action would be to retain the live broadcast on YouTube and to keep public comments separate from that, if that is the main issue. Because Lawrence Times, that are doing a great job putting that up online. And in fact, the last meeting I checked earlier today, there were more views on Lawrence Times' public comment broadcast than there were of the actual meeting, which is kind of both sad and also impressive. And, yeah, so that would be sort of my, my first suggestion on the issue. And just don't agree with it. I agree, we should live broadcast everything we do here, because it's all representative of the people of Lawrence and, and truth and transparency and collaboration is the goal of these meetings and governance in general. And on the issue of veterans, I would just highlight, my stepfather spoke earlier. He's a local veteran, Bronze Star and Purple Heart recipient, if that leads to any help with making this decision. And he even graduated from the University of Kansas and the, and Kansas State University. So he knows and understands both sides of the issue. So I would echo his viewpoint on this issue. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else in the room online?
We do have a few. Stephen Watts.
Hi, thank you. You know, you have, I have to conclude off the top of my head. What? Because there's no leadership Lawrence types here tonight, that all of this is a waste of everybody's time? I understand something has to happen with the passage of this legislation. And it's clear what needs to happen. That is, public comment needs to be placed back into the entire meeting, and it be livestreamed and broadcast. I don't know what you're hiding from, or what people are hiding from. At the same time, it's also past time to allow the public to have access to the consent agenda items and be able to pull those. What is performative is these meetings. You guys, I mean, it's just coming to the place where you're rubber stamp, rubber stamp, rubber stamp. These meetings belong to the people. They are the people's meeting. First and foremost, it's not to make life simple for the executive team and the rest of the town staff. I understand there are problematics in there. In fact, we need to expand to four meetings per month, bare minimum, one a week. When it was cut down to three, okay, that was back then. Now we face financial exigency. Now we face homelessness issues beyond belief. We face all kinds of stuff. We need more meetings. They need to be broadcast live. Right now, going back with this, I'm struggling. I'm having to move back between the Zoom meeting and the YouTube meeting in order to see who an HE double toothpick is talking. Also, written into this resolution is wiggle room. They'll post the video the next day, or, impracticable. That means they'll do it whenever the fuck they get around to it, if they feel like it on those days. Excuse my French. It's kinda like, why, I'm having, I, I can't believe it. I mean, I'm sitting here watching a Zoom meeting, but I can't see anything. So I have to switch over to YouTube. And I thought we had kinda repaired that. So at any rate, please, understand these meetings belong to the people. What is the problem with streaming it live? Okay? That's all I have to say for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adriana Williams.
Do it here.
Hello, Adriana Williams, 66049. Please continue to let comments like mine in the live streaming on YouTube, and not just at the end of the meeting, for freedom of speech sake. I will show my public comment as a valid truth and as an example of what you will be censoring by not live broadcasting everything that's in the meeting. So it is relevant to, to, to the present comments. The LGBTQIA+ movement, emboldened by Mayor Michael Dever's proclamation of June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, leaves many astray from God's natural order. Genesis 127 declares, "So God created man in His own image; male and female created He then." This divine binary rooted in biology is subverted by identities and attractions that are not natural but often born of pain. Studies like those from the American Psychological Association reveal up to 60% of transgender individuals report past abuse, neglect or mental health struggles shaping their identities. These are not innate, but wounds from a fallen world. Yet Mayor Dever's proclamation celebrates this confusion, ignoring the harm. For example, transgender interventions cause irreversible damage, as 2021 Archives of Sexual Behavior study estimates 10 to 30% of trans individuals e-transition, regretting permanent changes. Chloe Cole, who shared her testimony in the public, who transitioned at 12 with puberty blockers, testosterone, and mestacomi, mestacomi, transitioned at 17. Her dysphoria stemmed from trauma and societal pressures, not a need to alter her body. She now warns of these harms facing medical and social fallout. We must object to this proclamation. June should not be Pride Month glorifying sin, but a time to heal deep wounds from abuse and trauma. The gospel and conservative values work. A 2018 Journal of Christian Psychology study found 70% of trauma survivors who embraced biblical counseling and traditional family values reported significant healing, compared to 40% with secular therapy. Faith in Christ restores brokenness. John 10:10 promises, "I am come that they might have life, and that they might have it more abundantly." Through faith in God's only begotten Son, Jesus Christ, Jesus heals. Through repentance from our own non-biblical ways, Jesus heals. I call you to write Mayor Dever urging him to rescind this proclamation. I do urge you to rescind it, Mayor Dever, and help our community to seek Christ's healing offered to all. Let June be a month of gospel restoration, not pride.
Okay, thank you. Your time's up. Any other comment?
Check in. That's all the comments.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, comment, motions.
I'm gonna have to come in. I'm gonna check with the mayor.
Mayor Dever, any comments you want to make? Would you start?
I'll let you, I'll let you talk, and I'll join in if I need to. I'm being remote. Thank you.
I guess I'll just say a couple things. I mean, I think there was the question about the Zoom participation. You know, if you're watching on YouTube, you can't participate in the meeting. You have to be on the Zoom feed to participate in the meeting. So getting people onto the Zoom meeting allows that participation. You know, this is the model that the county uses to not livestream it, but use the Zoom webinar version. And they've been doing that for a while now. And of course, we've not been streaming live public comment for quite a while now either. And, you know, obviously, I think as Patrick pointed out, often the, there's some more views on people who show it in other places. But I think that, you know, what we want to encourage is the, is the Zoom participation. And if someone wants to watch it live as opposed to watching it, you know, the next day or later that night, obviously, they can join the Zoom meeting. We do that on, on the county commission all the time. So, you know, my only concern really is the concern that, I think Steve has pointed out a few times, and that we need to make sure our Zoom is, is working well, so that people participating by Zoom can, can follow that. But I think we can continue to work on that and get that fixed. So, you know, I, I see this as a continu-. So, you know, I see this as a continuation of what we have been doing, and I understand that people have been objecting to it since we made the change, but I see this as a continuation of that, of what we have been doing. And I'm fine with that mode of participation through the Zoom and being here in presence. And I guess I would add that, you know, there's a lot of cities that either don't have public comment or don't allow Zoom at all, or don't allow livestreaming at all. They make everyone show up and post, and I certainly don't support changing any of those things. I want public comment, I want people to be able to come on Zoom and participate that way, and I want people, you know, to not have to be here to participate, but if they want to be here to participate, that's great too. So I think all three of those are, you know, good ways to participate.
Other comments?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Dever?
I just wrote down a couple of questions, and I want to make sure we get answers to them if possible. The first question is, how will this decrease our transparency to the public?
I missed the question. Why'd you say, how will it?
How will this decrease our transparency relative to our public and/or our elected?
You asking how you'll decrease it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the connection's really not very good right now. Yeah, I'm going to turn off my video, see if this helps, hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, so how will this decrease our transparency relative to people's ability to access our meetings? I think you've highlighted that, but is there really any decrease in transparency at all?
It's only the mode of, I mean, others can answer, the mode of how you do it, either Zoom versus YouTube. If you're not going to be here present, you have to choose a medium, and that medium, if you choose Zoom, you can have that access. Or if you choose YouTube, that's the only access we're taking away. Is that your question?
Right on, yeah. So it's only to YouTube if you want to livestream via YouTube, but we can still livestream via Zoom like I am doing right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so, I saw some confusion from some of the public commenters, and I want to make sure we understand why we're doing this. We're specifically requested because there was a suit filed, and therefore we are asked to act, and therefore we are choosing between either livestreaming all of it or livestreaming it the way it was. And since we can't do it piecemeal, we're going to have to do away with it under this current proposal, correct?
Yeah, you said suit, but I think you meant statute. There's a new statute that requires, yeah, the new statute that requires.
Sorry, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so does that mean that, you know, some people want to keep it as is, we can't, we cannot maintain that statute quote, correct?
Correct, that's to be some change.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and so, so the last question was, so the reason for having city commission meetings, I think some people brought this up, can we focus on and can we elaborate on the reason for having, you know, weekly city commission meetings and their purpose so that the public can understand that?
You asking for my opinion, or you want to give your opinion?
No, no, I like the other commissioners' opinion on this because people brought it up, and I feel like, you know, I mean, it's important for many reasons, but, you know, I think public comment is fundamental, and I think I want to maintain that as part of our meetings. But I believe to, you know, I want to make sure I understand everyone's opinion that that is, you know, we all agree that that's important, but that fundamentally, we are doing the city's business during our public meetings, correct? And I want to make sure, that's my understanding, and I just want to make sure if there's others that disagree, that I'd like to understand that.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree that, I mean, obviously, those resolutions to pass, those bills to pay, those decisions and policy to make, and that's the primary purpose of the meeting, not, I mean, that's the primary purpose of the meeting, to do those things.
Yeah, I think you mentioned other municipalities don't even have general public comment at all, and I do not want to do away with that in any way, shape, or form, but I want to make sure that we are not limiting the ability of the public to comment in any way in approving this, correct?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, there's several, quite a few cities that don't allow general public comment, you know, places like Wichita only allow it once a month, you know, others that do it on the fourth week of the month, they don't allow general public comment, you know, regularly. And so, no, I mean, I certainly believe we should have general public comment every week, and every week that we have a meeting and have that ability and continue that ability.
Okay, very good. All right, thanks. I just wanted to get anybody else's input on that too, because those are the things I wrote down, being outside the room, so I wanted to make sure we talked about them. Thanks.
Yeah, I would second that. I mean, I definitely want, you know, general public comment to be a part of the meeting every week. And, you know, yeah, it's, I don't want that to go away.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Public comment is definitely something that I would never see want to go away. So our options here, based on what I understand in the statute, change is that we either livestream at all or we don't livestream any of, is that correct, Tony?
It's correct that we are responding to the change in state law. We will be livestreaming on YouTube, it is just we are selecting YouTube to be the manner in which we are livestreaming during the meetings.
Say that again, you meant Zoom.
I meant.
Selecting Zoom as the.
Yeah, we're selecting Zoom, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Because Zoom is where we're already livestreaming the entire meeting.
And we need the Zoom to have people interact. They can't interact through YouTube.
That's correct.
Correct, got it, yeah.
Other comments? If not, I look for motion.
Which one are we on?
6CB.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 7600.
So, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Littlejohn, seconded by Mayor Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, passes three to one. Okay, that brings us to C7E, and I think you pulled that?
Yeah, I did, and this was, again, somebody had asked me from the community to pull it.
Thank you, Commissioners, Vice Mayor. This is about street closures, specifically, this one is about the Barker anniversary block party. That's great, I think everyone supports it, and obviously, they had their signatures. This was approved back on May 20th with, I think, two other street closures. The problem is that, again, the maps are not being supplied to the public, so the public doesn't know what is going to be closed. So I, not a Commissioner, are being asked about whether they can get into their home, whether they can drive on their street. That's not great. If the map was supplied to the public, that would tell you that, number one, you care whether the neighborhood knows what's about to happen, and it would also tell the public that you care about the taxpayers' assets being closed or not closed and the people around them being known. Now, later, I will talk to you about the Sandbar Block Party, which is totally other conversation, that, again, for years, I've been asking, and Commissioner Larson agreed with me, that the maps should be supplied, specifically that the sidewalks not be closed. So, again, I want to remind you that the maps exist at Parks and Rec, they have to be supplied for the closure, and that those should be put in the packet so the neighbors know what will be closed. No one should have to call Parks and Rec or ask for a Freedom of Information request to know when their street is closed. So I just would like you to ask Parks and Rec to supply that information on the agenda so that people like me don't have to come up and ask. Thank you.
Do we have questions for staff?
I guess, would I ask staff if that could be done, when that could be done?
Looks like Roger's on.
I can, oh, Mayor, or, I guess Vice Mayor, I can speak to that and maybe ask Roger, I guess, about the availability of maps, but that's something we could consider doing, but we'd ask for direction from the full city commission to do that first.
Roger, you have any comments?
Right, well, we do have an online process now, and so they are submitted online, and we just have to download them and make it a part of the packet. But, again, it's being reviewed by police, fire, transit, you know, a lot of different individuals in the city. And right now, this one came in late, and I know you did approve it last week, and then he realized that there were a lot of events going on Saturday, so he asked to make, move it to Friday, and that's why we're having the repeal and replace segment. But it's up to you what you want. We try to provide as much as we can, and there are some questions that come up late in the game when we're reviewing these things, and I try to do my due diligence and try to get everything put together in a timely fashion for the people to have everything they need to be as safe and secure as possible. They do, we do require them to get signatures of those folks across, you know, around the neighborhood to let them know what's going on and that they approve of it, and this gentleman has done that. And I think Taylor is on the line as well, if you have any questions of him as well.
And Vice Mayor, I might just add, you know, I would just remind the commission that on these resolutions, the commission's not voting on the map. You're not voting on the street closures or the boundaries, you're voting whether or not to allow the sale and possession of alcohol in the public right-of-way, and staff works with the applicants and with, as Roger said, several different stakeholders or folks who have an interest in it, in the event, both from the neighborhood or, you know, impacted properties, as well as our own staff. And so, I think that would be the concern from the staff perspective, is do we get to a public meeting and now we're revising maps, you know, kind of on the fly? That could cause some challenges potentially for us.
Yeah, can I speak to that?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, Brendan. I think it's important to understand our role in this process, and if there is some sort of lack of communication between us and the public on these maps, then I would apologize, but I feel like the transparency is important, but we need to maintain city commission role, and we need to understand what our role is, and I don't want to be reviewing maps relative to the sale and possession of alcohol. I think that's outside of our realm. I think we need to be judging whether or not it's suitable, period, based on the recommendation from our staff.
Okay. Well, we, thank you for that. Go ahead and make sure there's no other public comment on that particular item in the room or on, oh, David?
Well, I didn't plan on speaking of this at all, but I don't think you actually addressed Courtney's question, you just kind of jumped around it. All she's saying is, can you provide some maps to the people that live there, period? How hard is that to print some maps off, take them over there, mail them, whatever? Yeah, I know it wasn't part of that plan or whatever you guys scrambled around, but we didn't answer that particular question. Thank you.
Any public comment online?
There's not.
Okay, now I'll bring it back to us for additional comment.
I would, I would like a question.
Yeah.
I would ask whether or not, and I realize what our role is in this, however, if it's, if there is a link on the Parks and Rec website for this particular item, if you could at least provide the link that somebody could click on and get a map?
Commissioner, we don't post the events of other folk on the website. I mean, the only place we have it is the portal when they apply for a right-of-way map or right-of-way permit, pardon me. And I don't know, to me, that's more of the software if we allow those other things to go out. I mean, we'll take it at your direction in terms of what you want us to put out there. Now, like I said, there are things that happen that we have to do last-minute changes of things, like emergency street closures and those types of things for broken water mains and stuff that may pop up. And, again, I would hate to put something out there that isn't right. But to Courtney's point, I think it is important that we let people know when we're closing streets. And I have tried to share on Facebook a lot of the events that we have, like the St. Patrick's Day Parade, that's always a big event that goes down mass, that closes mass and over the bridge, or at least one side of the bridge. And we, you know, I want to make sure that individuals in the community know this. And so, we try to share from their posts so it's not looking like the city is actually in charge of the event. That's, because then there gets to be questions, and then we're sponsoring a lot of these events that we may not be. We're just allowing them, you know, through your approval to do something in the street.
And Vice Mayor, I just might add, I think, you know, I appreciate Roger's concerns, but I know we do, at least last I knew, we had a right-of-way permit map that's available on the city's website. So we can look at some of our processes and see if we can make that information available publicly in a more streamlined way, more accessible way.
I think that would be great, because how does a neighborhood know where they should or shouldn't be with a can of beer?
Exactly. Now that I understand the concern a little bit better, I can think of some ways we might be able to address that without kind of scope creep here at the, you know, the commission meeting.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. Yeah, I think as to what Commissioner Larson was talking about, it was more of a notification thing to be involved with the process, even though it's not our process and it's the, you know, party's process that holds the event, but to hold them accountable for going in and doing it, so.
Right.
And I guess the only other thing I'd add is, I know, obviously, in planning and zoning in other places, we often just publish the application along with, you know, as part of the packet, you know, so that might be a possibility too, something that explains the event, what they're asking for, and that also puts out some information, again, just generally, hey, this is what we're celebrating, this is what we're planning to do, and that, and it's, obviously, that's a public record that they've submitted to us, so that might be something to consider as well.
Yeah, we can consider that. Yeah, I think there's quite a bit of work that goes on then after the application.
Yeah.
So I just wouldn't want to put inaccurate or dated info out there.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, we'll take a look at our processes and see if we can come up with a good solution.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, is there a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll move to repeal Resolution Number 7957 and adopt Resolution Number 7601.
Second.
So, motion by Commissioner Larson, a second by Commissioner Littlejohn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes four to zero. That moves us to the regular agenda item, which is to consider renewing the Catalyst Program, an industrial development expansion initiative program for three years.
All right. Vice Mayor and Commissioners, this is my item, so I'll kick it off here. I did not prepare much of a presentation tonight. This is a pretty straightforward recommendation from staff for a three-year renewal of the Catalyst Program. The Catalyst Program was originally approved or authorized in 2017, and the most recent authorization actually sunset this past April. As we've gone through a pretty significant staffing transition in our Economic Development Office, I've taken that on. This was on my work plan, and I'm unfortunately just now getting it to the commission, so I apologize for the last month and a half or so, two months that we've been, you know, we've had a lapse in this policy. The, a little bit of background about the Catalyst Program. It is a development, industrial development incentive program that provides a predictable package of development incentives for new build projects as well as expansion projects. The program is available to, in its current configuration, all general industrial zone land around the community, public or privately owned. land around the community, public or privately owned. And for development projects that meet certain criteria for building size and for capital investment, which are laid out in the policy, which is, are in the program guidelines, which are linked in the agenda report. The program, in our view, has been helpful activating our publicly-owned industrial properties in particular, including Lawrence Venture Park and East Hills Business Park. But we've also seen some privately-owned properties do, in particular, expansions under this program as well. So it is, it has helped to, to not just retain some of our thriving industry here, but help them to actually grow here, which then, you know, not only creates, I think, additional jobs and income in the community, but in our particular interest with the city, helps to expand our industrial tax base. As you're aware, industrial tax is collected at 25% as opposed to a residential tax, which is 11 and a half percent on assessed, of assessed valuation. So those industrial properties, along with commercial properties, are pretty critical for our tax base here locally. Some of the projects, I, like I said, the program was originally authorized in 2017, so we're at a point now where some of the projects are getting close to rolling off of the abatement, period. And that means that those properties now, these pretty large-scale industrial properties, such as the Van Trust properties, are getting ready, we're getting ready in the next two years to realize the full property tax collection on those properties. That's notable because this is a common type of development incentive program for industrial spec buildings or even tenant-based buildings, and it creates a snowball effect, or sort of a positive compounding effect, where we've, we are realizing the full valuation of some of those initial properties while also then being able to incentivize the next generation of industrial development. So it, we're excited to see it working as, as intended and as designed. And with that, I would recommend an additional three-year extension of the program, and would welcome any questions that the Commissioners might have.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon. Any questions for Brandon?
Yeah, I just had a question regarding, how much space do we have left to?
Yes, good, good question. We do have a few larger parcels in East Hills Business Park and Lawrence Venture Park, two in particular that are, that are pretty premium, along the 23rd Street or Old K-10 frontage. And then we've got a number of smaller parcels in both of those, the industrial park and the business park. We also have industrial property around the, the city and other areas. And in particular, I think we can look at Catalyst Program as we, as we do our North Lawrence Corridor study, which is a large expansion, expansive region from downtown clear up to the airport. We've got IG property at the airport as well, or property that could potentially maybe be rezoned for IG to incentivize some, some industrial development in those, along that corridor too. So, which, which is notable because, you know, we've got rail and air and interstate and state highways all intersecting those different modes of transportation, which I think can be pretty interesting when you think about that on a, on a regional logistics basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I do have, why, why, why do we, is this question time?
Yeah, question.
Okay. Why do we only renew it on a three-year cycle?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. I thought, originally, I thought maybe we should just do a, you know, permanent authorization. There, you know, there's no rhyme or reason. A lot of communities do this just as a fixed, you know, kind of permanent package. We, you know, I, I would say we're still, we're, we're still fairly early on with the Catalyst Program, even though it is coming up, you know, in this next three years, it'll be ten, a 10-year anniversary. And so we're still kind of evaluating it as we go. We also, you know, it, it would be great if we could grow out of it, and, you know, industrial development would come here without, without the level of incentives that are predictable through this program.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll open it to public comment.
John Martin, six six oh four six. Sorry, first thing I thought of when I looked at the packet, three big things that are missing from the packet that should be asked of any financial package. What's the implementation cost? What's the opportunity cost? And what's the ROI? I don't see any of that in the packet, so why are we authorizing any, any taxpayer or tax incentive deferment? Because we don't have all the information. So I, I would, if, if it's already been in place for seven, eight years now, we don't have that data? Why? So, it's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Steve Kelly, six six zero four seven. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Lawrence Chamber and the EDC, Mayor Dever, far away, and members of the Commission. In April, as it was, as Brandon stated, the city passed, April of 2017, the city passed the Catalyst Program in an effort to stimulate activity primarily at East, at Lawrence Venture Park, which had sit and, had sat kind of dormant since the transition from the, the old farmland days. And it was, this was taken with input from a, a number of, of folks who were in the industry and who had identified some of the things that could be done to maybe get some activity out there. City staff and others worked on the, the idea and kind of built the, the platform that, that became Catalyst. And in the, in the time, since it's been, since its inception, it's really been the primary go-to for all the, basically all the companies of any size that have done expansions and/or came to Lawrence. As Brandon said, it's, it started, and that's one of the reasons, I think, that maybe in its initial phases, it was done on like a, the first time it was a two-year period, and then it was three-year. And each of those times, we, there, there have been some, some minor tweaks to it, some additional information was required, some different things were changed. And so it's been a way to kind of build and, and build on what we learned over time. But, you know, the question of whether it should be permanent, I think that's a valid question or something to look at, or maybe at least extend the time. But really, in that timeframe, since Catalyst came on board, it has been the go-to for companies that were looking to make major investment in the community. If you look at the, the capital investment, and, and this is just on the real estate side, it's been over $70 million that have, have been done in, in Catalyst projects. And that includes projects in East Hills, projects in Lawrence Venture Park, and some outside of, of those two industrial parks. And so it, it's been, I think, popular for a couple of reasons. One, it's fairly streamlined compared to a lot of other city processes, and it also provides some certainty of what the benefit will be if you do all the things you're supposed to do. And I think that's been something that in the past was sometimes a question, whether there was a consistency in terms of offers, and this has done that. I think most companies like it because it's fairly clear-cut, and they know going in what the requirements are, what they'll need to do, how they need to achieve to, to meet the, the standards of what the program allows. You know, and there's also, as Brandon mentioned, it'd be great to be in a position where you didn't have to have incentive programs. We're not there yet, and I would, I would urge that the, that the, that the Commission reapprove and renew the Catalyst Program.
Thank you. Other public comment on this item? See none, any online?
No.
Bring it back to the Commission.
Vice Mayor, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So this implies that a sunset is to occur in July of 2028. So to me, sunset implies the end of the program. Is that what we are anticipating, or is that what they're implying? I want to get a clarification on that.
Brandon?
Yeah. Mayor Dever, this is Brandon McGuire. We, we would, you know, most likely be bringing it back for an additional authorization. So maybe I misused the word sunset, and I, I appreciate that in, in the public policy realm. But it, this authorization would expire on that date, July 1st, 2028.
Excellent, because sometimes we programs have renewing, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I support the, the expansion of the project. I do think it's been, it's been useful. You know, if, if we get a complaint, it's often that we're not predictable enough. So to have a predictable program that works, and I think it has, has worked, so I appreciate that. I think Mr. Martin made a, a good point. We probably could have linked in our economic development report on this, that does have that ROI and have the other, I mean, you, you took one table out of it, but maybe next time, link the whole report in there that shows the return on those projects. And so I do think, I think it has been successful, and so I'll support it. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would agree. It goes a long way towards the idea of adding more commercial development to the town to go ahead and offset the burden on residential taxpayers, taxpayers. And as we see, some of the earlier deals are starting to go ahead and, you know, expire in terms of the abatements, and then they will be fully on the tax rolls at that point, and we'll be able to derive the, the full amount from them. And so on, on another aspect of that as well, it's, these are businesses from small to medium-sized to large. And I've always said that I would love this town to encourage more small, medium business owners and help them grow their, their businesses. So this is one tool in the toolbox we can use to do that, and there, there are others. But I would love for us to continue growing on our business here, businesses here in Lawrence. So I'm going to go ahead and support it.
Yeah, I, I always had the fortune to be on the Commission at the time. This was all being discussed, informed, and I remember Diane was a big, big supporter of this and kind of led the way on getting this program together. And it, it's a good program that actually brings industrial businesses to our community and also with jobs. And those are two big categories that I think, if anything, would, would warrant any level of incentive, if, if any at all. And those are the ones that I like to see come, and it's, it's working. It's even allowed local companies, three of our local larger employers, to add to their facilities as well as expand the employment. And so it, we'd love to see new, new industry come in, but if we can also use it to help our existing companies thrive and grow, that's even better. So I'm definitely in support of this.
Okay. Mayor Dever, any, any words?
Yes, I'm in favor of this. I appreciate the work that was done previously and appreciate the businesses that have spent their time and energy to build and construct in Lawrence. So I'm, I'm really excited to see this continue.
Okay, I'd look for a motion then, and maybe we change the word sunset to expire there in the motion. Make that motion.
Yeah, well, authorize a three-year extension of the Catalyst and industrial development incentive program to expire on July 1st of 2028.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Littlejohn. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passes four to zero. That concludes the regular agenda. We move on to Commission items. Are there any Commission items? Just two real quick. And I think Commissioner Littlejohn was there too, but we saw the documentary on the return of the Red Rock that they, they put out. And Commissioner Larson, you have a big part in that, reading the proclamation. And anyway, it was a great, great documentary, and they're trying to get it out now. I mean, they, those are private showings, and they're trying to get a distribution of it. So hopefully, others can see it sometime in the future, but stay tuned on that. And when it does become available, I hope, hope folks watch it. And the other one was, went to the opening of the Cardinal House there by the courthouse, which is a ten-person alcohol treatment facility that we supported and the county supported, and of course, a lot of private money into it, and just another good step forward in some of our programs. Any other Commission items?
Glad you mentioned Cardinal House. I was thinking about saying something about that. So it was an outstanding, you know, day for it, and, you know, a great program, and they've done a lot of hard work, and I'd like to see more of them.
Well, they have the second one coming. It's coming soon. Okay, future agenda items. And I will confirm, I'm not going to be here next week. I'm coming on the way to my daughter's wedding. Will not be here next week. Any other comments on the future agenda? Okay. Then calendar items. Any questions or comments on the calendar items?
Nope. We're good.
Okay, seeing nothing on the calendar items. We will end the live broadcast, and then I'll go ahead and read the public comment statement. Then we'll open it up for public comment. The public is allowed to speak on issues or items not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The Commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the Commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments.